This conference will now be recorded.
Um, Laura's on the line.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. This is a partial electronic meeting. Partially electronic meeting is being held because a fully in-person meeting is impossible or impractical due to concerns for the health and safety of board members, staff, and the public presented by COVID-19 and to follow the governor's proclamation directing social distancing and placing restrictions on gatherings. Let's see, so in order to establish who is present for this meeting, I'd like to take a roll call. Sylvia? Sylvia Roba, are you there? Okay. Maggie Mato?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Amanda Mato?
I'm here.
Thank you. Craig Cooper?
I'm here, here.
Thank you. Malavika Shrikanthi?
I'm listening.
Thank you. And I'm myself, I'm here, Steve Emming. And so we will proceed seeing as we, whoops, let me check here. Okay, seeing as we have a quorum. Okay, before we actually get into the meeting agenda, I'd like to introduce Joe Heinrichs. Hi, Joe. Joe has been appointed by Mayor Mattson to replace Matt Cassius, who is not seeking a second term in order to devote more time to his business and family. We very much appreciate Matt's service and his devotion to the library. And I guess in that same regard, would mention that Mayor Mattson has also reappointed Craig Cooper and Amanda Mato to second terms. We appreciate your service also and Joe's interest in serving as a trustee of the library. Let's see, so having taken the, having taken the roll call, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will see.
Okay, who gave the motion? Okay, thank you. And is there a second?
There's a second from Craig.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please signify, whoops, hold on, I'm sorry, have to take a roll call since we're electronic. Maggie Mato?
Hi.
Thank you. Amanda Mato? Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you, Malavika. And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. No one registered to, well, no one from the public registered to speak, so there's none there. Moving on, reports and communications. The friends, Laura?
Hello, yes, hi, everyone. I don't have, I don't have really very much of an update since the last time that we met. You know, I shared our good news last meeting and it's been a quiet month. So really, the only thing is that I want to connect with Amy about exploring options for hosting an electronic Friends Meeting or even maybe an annual meeting and just kind of figuring it out forward, but I'm eager to listen and hear what updates the library has that may influence with the reopening, that may influence when we host our annual Friends Meeting. So no real update from me, thank you, and I'll just stay on listening.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
So Laura, did I, did I manage to not send the update that we did receive 5,000 from Wells Fargo and from US Bank? I don't know that the trustees know that.
Oh, I thought I showed that at the last trustee's meeting. So my apologies if I didn't, but I thought that I had mentioned those last time.
Okay, man, maybe I've got my timing wrong.
Yeah, I think you did, Laura. At least I've heard that before somewhere. Okay, um, let's see then, friends, next we have committee reports. Is Tom joined yet? Okay, so I guess we'll have no finance report. Personnel Committee, Amanda, do you have anything there?
Nope, nothing on my end.
Okay, thank you. And Malavika, advocacy?
Nothing on my end, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, next item on the agenda is the director's report. Amy, anything you'd like to add or amplify?
Okay, well, I'll start with the reason why we're not in our usual spot today and why this is just all a little bit confusing is that, as you know, we've been working on getting the air handlers replaced at Maine and on Friday, one of the subcontractors unplugged our sump pump in order to plug in one of his tools and neglected, unfortunately, to plug it in again. So as you know, we got a ton of rain and so we came to work yesterday morning and found wet carpets everywhere that lower level where the meeting rooms are and in the room that we store many, many of our historical records in and things like that. So, so those rooms are unavailable to us right now. It seems like they're drying out pretty well. The, the general contractor called a disaster, you know, response company and they are obviously responsible for any of that expense. We didn't really have much damage in terms of the collection. It's all spread over special collections right now because we just wanted to get it out of there because of the humidity issues. So right now, it looks like perhaps the carpet will dry all right. If it doesn't, then the contractor will be responsible for replacing it all. So, um, so there we are. So that's why we're doing this kind of oddly and don't have our usual video conferencing available to us. Yeah, 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 I'm thinking that the guy who did that for the subcontractor might be not the most popular person in his company right now, so.
You know, just a, just a suggestion, you know, that might be a good item to add to some checklist that maybe the custodians check before a weekend or maybe just on a regular basis. I mean, it's, it's so unusual, but yet pretty easy to look at just to make sure.
Yeah, Casey says we're going to get a lock on that so that they can't do it, yeah.
Oh, that's probably the better.
Maybe, yeah, maybe a few locks.
Got a sign.
So as I, as I noted in my report, the all has arrived and we included some pictures. So it was really exciting. I actually got to touch it the other day after two years of being on order. I had to touch it to verify that it really existed. You know, unfortunately, we're not clearly not doing a ton of outreach right now, but I think it's going to slowly start back up again. They, the senior living facilities in particular that we, we visit, they were obviously not happy about having anybody there. But yesterday, I think it was, we dropped off our very first deposit collection since this all started. So I think in some of the senior facilities are slowly being okay with, you know, we, it was, you know, contactless, but you know, we, they at least allowed our materials in their buildings and will make those available to their residents. So that was nice. So I think we'll slowly get that going. Brittany, our outreach supervisor, has a list and kind of a schedule put together. We have received requests from various social service organizations and places like that, you know, could you just bring it and park it and turn the Wi-Fi on, you know, for an afternoon to get some more internet accessibility into some underserved areas of the community? So we'll be working on doing that. We started the drive-up service at Fairmont yesterday at 1:00 and we checked out 402 items during the four hours that we were open. We think there are probably around 200 to 220 patrons that came through. So, so some people clearly only got one or two items because we also heard that one or two patrons had like 30 items that they had waiting for them, so. We've been doing a lot of.
I can tell you.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I can tell you that my wife, Mary, reported that there was, there's definitely, has definitely been pent up demand. She and a friend of hers were trying to have lunch together at acceptably with, acceptable social distancing. And so the friends suggested they find a, a relatively unused parking lot somewhere and, and so they could spread out and have lunch and talk at some distance. And so they decided on the Fairmont Library parking lot and they set up out at one of the far corners. And while they were there, that there were three people that stopped, drove by and pulled up and said, is the library open? Are you here for the library? He told them, no, you know, you know, my husband's on the Board of Trustees, I know, so I know the library's closed. And they, the guy said, one guy said, what do you mean it's closed? The governor said it's supposed to be open. And so anyway, they, they reported that, yes, there was people interested in getting into the library and wanted to know if it was open or why not.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we've been doing a lot of virtual programming and Lexi's been kind of keeping track of some of those statistics. So I asked her if she could share some information in terms of our virtual programming and what we've been seeing in terms of viewing and participation.
Yeah, so we kicked off our virtual programming back on March 19th. It was just about three days after our building's closed to the public and that was our very first Storytime Live. And just even that first day, we had 103 people tune in to watch it and they all had a lot of positive comments and were eager for us to do more, so we started doing more. So since then, we have steadily increased the amount of virtual programming we've done each week with staff bringing a lot of their own unique ideas and taking in some patron considerations and their suggestions as well, doing programming on platforms like Facebook Live, Zoom, GoToMeeting, and YouTube so that we can be reaching our patrons in all the different places where they are looking for something to watch online. So by the end of April, we had held 77 virtual programs for kids, teens, and adults. And our total viewership by that point was 2,422 people watched those programs. So some of our most popular kids programs were our Storytime Lives, especially when we've had special guests for those. So we've had police officers and firefighters and the mayor, lead some of those. Our, our peak attendance for that was, I believe, when Lieutenant Solis from the Fire Department read and had 129 kids watch that. That Friday has been a big hit with over 132 people watching the most popular one. And then their digital storybook program where one of our services librarians actually created an original story and animated it. And so we had over 100 viewers for that and we were very excited to hear the next installment. Our teen engagement has been really good, too. The teens are not on Facebook, apparently, but they really like to get together on Zoom and have the Teen Advisory Board meetings and their teen book club meetings. And they've just been so happy to have a chance to engage with each other and connect since they haven't been able to do that in person. Most pleasant surprise has been our adult programs, which in a lot of cases are getting even better numbers virtually than they were getting in person. So we've really increased our attendance at those programs by doing things like virtual book club, Ask a Librarian. We've got one of our librarians doing a gardening program in her own garden at home. We've got a movement program once a week, a program called Our Town once a week where librarian is highlighting different trails and places to walk around while social distancing here in Davenport. So our patrons have really enjoyed seeing some of those familiar faces and having a chance to learn something new in kind of a lower stress environment. We've had a lot of really positive reactions to these programs and people asking for more, so much so that we've got lots of fun stuff planned for the summer and probably beyond since there is a lot of interest. We will probably keep this going for a long time and it's been a benefit to our patrons.
Sounds very good.
I must say, there was such a great, because especially there was something that was just out of the reach to, uh, go to Friday.
Yeah.
Did you, Amy?
But then they went to the program that I would like to watch and, you know, somebody watched it, I believe. And the other thing, people got excited and that is my neighborhood, that's what I'm heard from, is the pet contest that you had, you know, it was like very exciting. They said like, oh, we could show off our, you know, pets and all that kind of stuff. So I wanted to say like, you know, I may not be participating, but I know friends and my daughter has been participating in a few things which are age relevant to her. So that's been really superb.
Yeah, the pet contest ended up being so much more popular than we expected and that one was just for fun. We asked our patrons to submit photos of their pets and we just did a contest to find the top pet here in Davenport. And so if you liked them, then they got a vote. And then our youth services librarian, Emily, made a little big magazine cover called Vanity Fur and the winner got to be on the cover. And we had, I can't remember how many entries, but I'm gonna say it was around 30 or so and tons of likes, tons of comments. So we got a lot of really good engagement from people who haven't, haven't been seeing us before.
Very good, thank you.
Just surprised kind of what, what is popular and the Read to a Dog program, I think that's one that, that we're kind of surprised at how popular that was, but we've gotten some really cute photos posted of, you know, kids sitting in front of the screen and they're showing the dog on the screen, the book that they're reading. So, so that's been fun to see, too. So, um, let's see, I think that was about it. We'll talk more about our opening plans and things later on in the agenda, I think. So, so unless there's, anybody has any other specific questions, I think that's kind of the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So the next item on the agenda then would be the City Council liaison to the library. Marion, are you on? Okay, hearing nothing from Marion, we'll move on. Moving on to new business. First item for new business is a motion to forgive patron fines through May 31st of 2020. Appreciate a motion in that regard.
So that was Craig, if you didn't hear him.
Okay, I'd, no, I did, but I could, I couldn't hear him.
Oh, sorry. Craig made the motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second, this is Amanda.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. So we have a motion and a second to forgive patron fines through May 31st of 2020. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing what, none, I'll call for the vote. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve the COVID-19 policies. May I have a motion in that regard?
I'll move, Steve. I move.
Okay, thank you, Malavika, is there a second?
Second, it's Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the COVID-19 policies. Is there any discussion?
So the, the, this, the policies, the six specific policies are things that we feel like we want to add to our current library policies, but I wanted to put it all in, in one document. So Craig, the document we're talking about is the shorter one. Yeah, so unattended children, right now, you can be in the library if you're age eight or older. We have sometimes eight-year-olds then come in and they're supposed to be hopefully supervising, you know, a six-year-old. And just given the current situation in terms of the social distancing that we're going to be doing our best to enforce and encourage in the buildings, it seems like 10 and under unsupervised, that we would like children 10 and under to be supervised by at least somebody who's 12 or 13. So, so that's kind of the reason for that. We know that children have equal rights in terms of using public libraries and we certainly don't want to be unwelcoming to them, but we feel in this particular instance, perhaps that might be not the safest thing to do. Right now, the behavior policy, item two, says that any behavior that endangers the health and safeties of others is prohibited in the building. That's like number one. So, and as an admin team, we've kind of gone round and round on this. Do we, do we feel like we need to add that for extra clarity or do we just leave it alone and if we have trouble, then we go ahead and add it again? So I guess we're feeling a little wishy-washy on that one. The meeting rooms are simply going to be unavailable to the public for the time being. And, and a lot of that is because we are limited to the number of people that we want in the buildings. So if we have even, and gatherings are still limited to 10 in the state of Iowa. So if there are 10 people in, in one of our meeting rooms, then there are fewer people that are allowed in the building. So that's a challenge for that. And then we're also using our meeting rooms at the branches, we're using two of them actually as kind of extended lunch areas because our meeting, our lunchrooms there are small enough that staff can't be six feet apart from each other during, during their lunch hours in those spaces. Again, because we'll be limited to the number of people in the building, some of that is the governor's mandate that we can open up at 50% capacity, I think it's 50%. But given how our door situation is, I believe that limit is going to be 24. We feel like we could really successfully manage 20. So with that limit, having patrons in the building, just kind of browsing and then checking materials out for more than 15 minutes a person, it seems like we wouldn't be able to provide very good access for people. The exception would be the public computers and we will limit that time to an hour. And then privacy policy, right now, we wouldn't release patron information to, to anyone unless it was law enforcement and they had a subpoena. And so we were just kind of trying to think it through. It's like, well, what happens if a staff member tests positive? They shouldn't be in close contact with a patron. I mean, we're trying really hard to avoid that, but if we would be asked for that information, it seems like we should provide it to authorize public health officials for that particular purpose. And without that change, we would be able to do that without a change, without having a special board meeting, which again adds time to that, that whole process. So, so those, that's kind of the rationale behind those. I did run, item six, the privacy policy in particular, passed the city attorney and he didn't have any problem with that. He, he thought that it would be fine.
I have two questions. The first one was like, you know, yes, we have to limit the time on the computer. So like, will they be self-timed out? Like, you know, you, the, the patron registers on the computer and the time, times out on the computer? I mean, how will we kind of?
Well, our, our patron reservation system, what we plan to do is set, set up appointments and require that people have an appointment to use the computers. And we would set those appointments so that they'd be in groups. So like, the first appointment time for the day is available between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. And then the next available appointments for anybody would start at 10:30. And that gives us a half hour in between so that staff can go and they can wipe down the computers before the next group of patrons would come in. But, but the timing system on the computers will only allow an hour if we set it that way. So, so after an hour, the patron would simply get logged out and, and we'd need to leave them. So, so we won't have to control that, fortunately, but we will have to be paying attention to those other time limits, which is why we're going to have basically a third or one additional service point in the building who's, who's going to be kind of our greeter, who will interact with patrons as they come in. And if they need a, if they have a computer reservation, we'll direct them to the appropriate number of computer that they have their reservation for. If they indicate that they are there just to pick up holds, we'll certainly let them do that, but then encourage them to use our, our curbside and drive-up options in the future to avoid having to have that contact. If they want to browse through the collection real quickly, we'll remind them that there's a 15-minute time limit. If they want to apply for a library card, we'll direct them to the online application that computers we have set up for that. So we're trying to make everything really kind of as, as contactless as possible and hopefully patrons will be respectful of the guidelines that we're setting and we won't have to, you know, chase them out of the building. So this is really different from what we normally do. Normally, it's like, you know, come on in, sit, stay, read a paper, browse a magazine, spend as much time as you want. And, you know, staff goes out of their way to, you know, actually, you know, walk patrons to the place and the shelves where they're looking for, for materials and, and help them find them. But we're going to try to really limit contact between patients and staff as much as we can, so as, as we move forward with this. I think if we see, so Craig's question was, you know, how are we going to handle it if we see, you know, a group of three or four kids or adults, you know, just kind of together and, and chit-chatting and things like that? I think we are going to rely on people to do their own social distancing and we, we don't want to be the social distancing police and might assume then that they all feel comfortable with that. On the other hand, if we end up with a situation where a patron says, you know, has asked somebody to give them a little more space and that person's refusing to do so and we get a complaint, then I think that would be the point where we would, you know, try to intervene and say, hey, you know what, just, let's just give everybody a little bit of space right now, even if you're not concerned, you know, other people are and let's just be respectful of that. So, and we're, we are going to require that staff wear masks when they're on the public floor, but we are not going to require patrons to do that. We are, we're going to work on some messaging that says, hey, we're wearing masks for your safety. Would you please wear a mask for our safety and for the safety of your fellow library users? But we're not going to be the mask police either because what do we do if somebody refuses? It's become such a political issue. We ask them to leave because they're not going to wear a mask and they refuse to leave saying that they've got a right to be in the library without having a mask on. Our only option is to call the police and I don't imagine the police want to be the mask police. And we, I certainly, we're not going to put our staff in danger trying to enforce something like that. This has become such a hot-button political issue. trying to enforce something like that. This has become such a hot-button political issue. So we are going to encourage, and hopefully if the people see all the staff wearing them, that they will be like, okay, I'm going to put one on, too. So we don't have, we also can't provide them to everybody who comes in the door. And just in terms of equity, if we're going to require it, we kind of have to provide it. We don't have the funds to continue to do that into the future. So that becomes a challenge as well for that particular one. So. We have, we have, we'll, so we'll...
I couldn't hear it.
And we have some order that should be here shortly that actually have the library logo on them. So we'll have official library masks for people to wear, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion?
The messaging maybe that you mentioned, we like, you know, making people aware. You reminded me of a few of these grocery stores around. They are having a dress on their system, a public system, where they often send out messages like, you know, please maintain distance. That's what you reminded me of, that they are announcing it on their public address systems, Hy-Vee or Schnucks or Target for that matter. I mean, I don't know whether that's applicable for us, but that's what made me think about it.
Well, so Craig's question was about, are we going to put like X's on the floor and things like that? And, yeah, we've been walking through the buildings and trying to figure out where we want patrons to kind of stand if they're waiting for service at the customer service desk. And so we're kind of thinking about, you know, I don't know, what are we going to put on the floor, some kind of library logo thing or whatever that says, you know, please wait here. We're hoping we won't have a huge problem with lines, just simply because we're limiting the number of people in the building so much. So hopefully that makes it a little bit easier to handle as well.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the COVID-19 policies? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Malavika?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you. Craig?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. And my own vote is yes, so the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to authorize the library to work towards reopening the library buildings following social distancing. Pardon me, let me start over. The next item is a motion to authorize the library to work towards reopening the library buildings following social distancing guidelines and guidelines from the State Department of Public Health on a date to be determined. To entertain such a motion?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Malavika. Is there a second? Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to authorize the library to work toward reopening the library buildings following social distancing guidelines and guidelines from the State Department of Public Health on a date to be determined. Is there any discussion on this motion?
So Steve, with this, since the motion, since the agenda, I should say, was published, we've had some more discussion, and we have some recommendations now for the trustees on a date and our hours.
Oh, okay.
So what we're recommending is June 1st as the date that we're going to be working towards reopening. And then our hours that first week, so be from June 1st through the 5th, that we would be open 9:00 to 5:30 in all three locations. And then we would resume normal hours on June 8th, if staffing allows. But if we have to reduce hours because we don't have enough staff back, we would reduce evening hours at Main. So our thought on that is that school is not officially out until sometime that first week of June. So staff that are on the extended childcare leave, that automatically goes through till the end of the school year. So we might still be really pretty short-staffed at that point. And those hours also allow us to have a supervisor in each building for all the time that we're open to problem solve and all that, and see what's going on, and support staff, as that'll be our first week that we're reopened to the public. And then that next Monday, we would go back to our regular hours, having some usual evening hours that we have at the branches, and be open on Saturday. And then at Main, if we do have to cut some of our hours, I checked with the president of Scott Community College, and she didn't see any problem with not being open till eight, four nights a week at Main, given the limited classes that they're going to be having in person over the summer. And she actually thought that it would be nicer to have, to make sure that we kept our regular hours at Fairmont in particular, so that students at the West Davenport campus might get some better access to computers and internet service if they needed it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Okay, so, yeah, so with that additional information, I don't, I don't think we need to change the motion, since it fits in with that. But, and it also sounds like some of the information you just gave us depends on staff availability and some other things. So do you agree, Amy, that we'd be okay just to go ahead with the motion as was stated?
I think it would be good to have the board at least officially authorize that June 1st date.
Okay. So would we be authorizing to work towards that date, or do we want to set that date?
I feel pretty confident that we can set that date.
Okay.
What do you think? Well, yeah, I think so. I mean, the only, the only situation would be if the partitions that we've ordered for the service desk at the branches, if those haven't arrived, we wouldn't open. So but at any rate, Main will still open on June 1st. So maybe, so maybe it's say on or after June 1st?
Sorry, can't you just say at the discretion of the director?
We can say that, but sometimes I like a little bit more board direction and authorization on things.
So we'd be, the motion would be to authorize the library to reopen on June 1st?
Yes, on or after June 1st.
To reopen the library buildings on or after June 1st. Motion to authorize the library to reopen the library buildings on or after June 1st. Okay. So, so let me read this motion then. So the motion, as it would be amended if that's approved, would be a motion to authorize the library to reopen the library buildings on or after June 1st, following social distance guidelines and guidelines from the State Department of Public Health. Period. Oh, I guess we could have put the date at the end. Okay, let me try this again. That'll be less of a, less of a change, perhaps. So the amended motion, assuming that's okay with those who made the motion and seconded, would read, "A motion to authorize the library to reopen the library buildings following social distancing guidelines and guidelines from the State Department of Public Health on or after June 1st." Does that sound good?
Steve, yes.
Okay, so the amendment is okay with Malavika, who made the motion. Maggie, is yours, you okay with that as a second?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, for the amended motion, to authorize the library to reopen the library buildings following social distancing guidelines and guidelines from the State Department of Public Health on or after June 1st. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Maggie?
Yes.
Thank you. Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Craig? Thank you, Craig.
Yes.
And Malavika, yes. Thank you, Malavika. My own vote is yes. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your patience with that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is old business, and there is none there. And the next motion, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. And I guess just like to say again, thank you, Joe, for joining us. We appreciate your interest in the library. And let's see, so then, I'm sorry?
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you. So sometime in June, I assume, the, Joe and Amanda and Craig, who have been appointed, will be on the agenda for council confirmation. So that, we'll want to put that on our calendars when it comes up. And if there's no other business to come before this forum, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.